Go ahead, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the City Council's and search agency to the Westminster Re-Development Agency meeting right now, seven twenty-five P. M. Wednesday, July twenty-second, twenty twenty. Roll call.
Mayor Ta.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
So, a salute to the flag will be Councilmember Contreras. Location will be Councilmember Nguyen. So please stand.
Please stand and place your right hand over your heart. You could after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic, with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Nguyen. Location, please. City Attorney. I'm having, I have not heard from Councilmember Nguyen. So can you do? And.
Sure. I will do it. Dear Heavenly Father, we help bow our heads as we gather here to do the important business of the city of Westminster. We are grateful for those who serve our community and protect us in these difficult times. We ask a special blessing on the City Council this evening, that they will act with wisdom and insight to do that which is best for all Westminster. We say these things thy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Contreras and City Attorney. Any report from City Attorney, please?
Yes, we had a closed session starting at, starting at six P. M. A. Closed session. That matter has not concluded. So when we finish our regular business.
Cut off. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
We could hear you, but.
I got cut off. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
So we went into close. We went into closed session. We did not complete that discussion. So therefore, after the regular meeting, we will be going back into closed session after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So next, expert communication. None. Report from City Clerk, please.
Yes, thank you. Just a reminder to anyone who hasn't filled out your census yet to fill out your census. That's all I have.
Really appreciate that. So next, we have oral communication.
Yes, thank you. I did not receive any oral communications by email for any of the non-public hearing items. But at this time, if anybody would like to speak, I would request that you raise your hand to speak. Okay, first speaker is Jody Boyd.
Hi, good evening, everybody. This is Jody. I would like to really just thank everybody. I've been very delighted with the Westminster Insider Newsletter. I think that's a great community outreach. I've been driving around the city and we do have a lot of really good things going on. Rancho Road project is really starting to take shape.
Hello, can you hear me? Can anybody? Hear you, yeah. Councilmember Nguyen, yes. Please continue.
Okay, and I'd also like to thank the city and Alexis and everybody involved with the construction of the new apartments over there on Westminster Boulevard, just east of Golden West. The apartments that are up, that are right there behind McDonald's, they're beautiful and they are now renting. And I can tell that the, the, I believe it's the Gateway Project that's directly across the street. The framing is up on that. So it's a very exciting transformation of that immediate area in our city. Overall, I just want to encourage everybody to keep up your good work. Lastly, and quickly regarding the agenda item regarding term limits. I've really been following up on this and I think at this point in time and in the history of city, our city, the money that would be spent on that ballot measure, we should just keep it in our general fund and not put this item on the ballot. It's really not going to accomplish much as written. That's it.
Thank you so much for that. City Clerk, do we have any other speaker?
Yes, we have Terry Rains. Terry, are you with us?
Good evening. You can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. I support item three point three, a contract to slowly seal twelve residential streets, as I happen to live in that area. The recommended company with the lowest bid is Onyx paving. And I wondered if we have experience with them because I know we've used All-American Asphalt and caught contracting a lot in the past. I hope Onyx does a good job and I wonder how COVID will affect this project and others like it since so many people are staying at home. Regarding our item five point three, thank you, Alexa, for confirming, and I'm sorry, my phone's ringing, that CARES Act funding cannot be used to do an enhanced infrastructure financing district feasibility study, which Vice Mayor Ho requested. The city of Placentia has formed the only EIFD in Orange County so far. And as a side note, Placentia is half the size of the Westminster, yet this year alone, they have managed to complete and open a great veterans' village housing project for homeless veterans, open a full-service navigation center and shelter for the homeless in addition to an existing homeless shelter already in the city, and left OCFA and formed their own fire department. The key here is leadership. City Council, the city administrator, and city staff. The other important key to success is the ability to form great partnerships with other agencies and organizations. Westminster is seriously lacking in all of these areas. Regarding item six point one, which reads continued from July eighth, twenty twenty, meeting placement of a measure on the November third, twenty twenty, general municipal election ballot related to term limits for elected officials' term limits. That's wordy. My comments are directed to council and the city attorney on this item. I reviewed the video from the last meeting and there was no vote to continue the item. As soon as the Mayor Ta read the item, Councilman Contreras moved to approve as recommended. Mayor Ta did not allow for, for or allow time for a second to that motion. Instead, Councilman Nguyen jumped in with, quote, "No, I have a question on this one. My understanding is that council decided and voted for three consecutive four-year terms for each office back in September of last year. I know there was a lot of, lot going on at the time and there was some confusion about it," end quote. The only person confused or pretending to be confused is Councilman Nguyen. I reviewed the video from the September eleventh, twenty nineteen, meeting. Councilmembers Contreras and Doe voted to put before the voters two lifetime four-year terms collectively, but the final vote that passed was for three lifetime four-year terms collectively. Mayor Ta and Vice Mayor Ho clearly supported that option then. The city attorney clarified several times during that meeting that it was total time in office, not by each seat. So perhaps Councilman Nguyen should review meeting videos to avoid confusion on his part. So what exactly has changed now ten months later? Why did Councilman Nguyen now suggest three four-year terms as mayor plus three four-year terms as a council member for a total time in office of up to twenty-four years? And why did Mayor Ta and Vice Mayor Ho now think that that's a great idea? Is it because they weren't recalled? And just to be clear, the clock doesn't start ticking until after this year's election if the measure passes, which means Mayor Ta could be in office here in Westminster for thirty-six years even with these quote-unquote term limits. Unfriggin believable. My preference would be that the voters be given the choice of voting for either two lifetime four-year terms or three lifetime four-year terms collectively regardless of seat. The city clerk said a two-option ballot measure would not be possible due to it being an ordinance. I would like to hear confirmation of this from the city attorney. So the gang of three wanted to force the voters to choose either this ridiculous option or no term limits at all. What's the difference? What kind of choice is this? The proposed ballot language is clear as mud, quote, "Shall an ordinance be adopted that prospectively limits the number of terms a mayor, member of the city council, or mayor, each office to be considered separately for purposes of term limitations may serve two, three, four-year terms, yes or no," end quote. Oh, my gosh. Here's something else to consider. A future council might consider to decide to propose an option of going with a rotational mayor like most cities in Orange County have, instead of having an at-large elected mayor. That would require a change to five council districts and a new term limit ordinance because there would no longer be two separately-held elected offices. Surely you can do better than this as a council. Vice Mayor Ho, your term is up in November. Keep in mind that every single vote you make now will have a direct impact on your reelection campaign, including this one on term limits and who you support for the position of city manager. In addition to your vote, your discussion about city issues, your willingness to listen to the public, and other actions are also closely being scrutinized. Thus far, you have helped anyone who decides to run against you in November. So I guess I thank you for that, Vice Mayor Ho, and thank you all for listening, hopefully listening. Thank you.
All right, City Clerk, any other speaker?
Last call for speakers. No, no additional speakers.
All right, so next we have consent calendar. No matter, listen to the consent calendar, I consider routine, maybe approved by a single motion, followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless Member City Council or staff request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar for a separate action or discussion. So Councilmember, have a motion?
Like to make a motion to approve.
All right, so. Who, second?
Hey.
Councilmember Doe or Councilmember Contreras? I couldn't hear. Is that Doe?
I had all remember Doe.
Okay, good. So the motion made by Vice Mayor Ho, second by Councilmember Doe, to prove the consent.
Mayor Ta.
Yes?
Vice Mayor Ho.
Councilmember Contreras? You still here?
Yes.
Okay.
That was a yes for the vote?
Yes, I think so.
And then, Councilmember Doe?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, so next we have public hearings. So, City Clerk, do you have to read the rule first and then read the item? Or we don't have to read the rule? So, okay, okay, if not, I read the item four point one, rent application for state permanent local housing allocation funds. So may I have a stop report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Alexa Sniddle, Community Development Director. This item is to submit for grant funding through the state. A couple of years ago, the state put together a new program which is funded through a transaction fee when a property is sold. The seller pays seventy-five dollars. This goes into a statewide fee. And then that money is allocated to cities via a part of the law. So Westminster is eligible to receive approximately five hundred and ten thousand dollars per year. That's not a guarantee. It will fluctuate depending on how many properties change hands over time, but it's the best estimate that, that the state has put forward to us. The use of the funds is really to preserve, develop, and rehabilitate affordable housing. So the, the goal and the intent of the state is to serve affordable housing. In addition, this particular funding program also allows us to use the funding for operations of a homeless shelter, which is very unusual. Most grant programs and available city funds are not able to be spent on operations. So staff is putting forth an estimate of how we believe the funds will be most useful. We need to provide this to the state and the state approves it. However, we can amend this plan at any time to meet our needs as, as they may arise over time. So what staff is proposing is for the five years that are envisioned in this initial grant plan, four hundred thousand of the five hundred and ten thousand dollars would go towards supporting homeless shelter operations. Now, as you know, we don't have an emergency shelter in town right now, but that is something that has been a very big topic of discussion. And because we can use these funds for that, we are suggesting that we set them aside for that purpose at this time. For the first two years, so year one and two, the balance of the funds would go to augment our existing tenant-based rental assistance program, the TBR program that we're currently funding with home funds. So adding a little additional funding to that to help homeless get into a housing situation with wraparound support. And then year three through five, using those funds to extend the covenants on a currently affordable housing complex where their covenant regulations are coming to an end. So to maintain further affordability on those units. This has been available for public review since July ninth. Staff has received no comments via email or phone and any other way. So with that, I'm open for questions. So we can move to the public here.
Thank you so much, Alexa, for your report. All right, before I open public hearing, any, any question or concerns from Member of the City Council? All right, here, none. So open, uh, public hearing.
Yes, thank you. Yes. So I received one email correspondence. This is from the Kennedy Commission from Caesar Corverrubius. And the letter states, "The commission would like to commend the city for its leadership and commitment to an emergency shelter navigation center, rental assistance, and an affordability covenant extension with its permanent local housing allocation plan. While these uses will provide much-needed support for the city's unhoused population and those at risk of losing their housing, these uses will only meet a small percentage of the city's lower-income housing needs. It is important that the city review its progress in providing new affordable housing for households with very low and low incomes perina allocation progress report submitted by the city. The city has seen two hundred ninety-one units built at the above moderate income level, while there were only two units built at the very low income level, and three units built at the low income level. The commission looks forward to partnering with the city to increase affordable home opportunities for lower-income households in the city. Please keep us informed of any updates and meetings regarding strategies to increase affordable homes for lower-income households in the city." Again, that's from the Kennedy Commission.
All right, so thank you so much. We appreciate that comment. And I'd like to close public hearing. If we don't have any.
We still have speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so please, please.
Yeah. So at this time, anyone who's interested in speaking can raise their hands. I have one, I have one for Terry Rains.
Okay.
Terry?
Good evening. I thought you were gonna skip me this time. I, I really would like if you guys could have all of the council members on the screen. I know I mentioned that before closed session, but I want to mention it now. It would be really helpful for the community to be able to see the council members' faces and expressions when they're speaking and have them all on video. Anyway, I am in support of the grant application for state permanent local housing allocation funds. The State Department of Housing and Community Development estimates Westminster will be eligible to receive approximately five hundred and ten thousand per year in SB two grant funding over the next five years. DAF is requesting four hundred thousand of that to be used to address homelessness through emergency sheltering, specifically operational costs for an emergency shelter or navigation center for the city's homeless population. I attended or watched all of the meetings of the homelessness task force. While the recommendations were somewhat general in nature, they did focus on the need for the city to do something sooner rather than later to address our homeless issue. This might be a great time for Alexa to present additional information about SB two. It is not just about funding. SB two was approved in two thousand and seven with the goal to remove zoning barriers for emergency shelters and transitional and supportive housing. Part of that was to provide funding and technical assistance to local governments to help them prepare, adopt, and implement plans and process improvements that streamline housing approvals and accelerate housing production. The basic requirement in SB two shelters is that the cities and the counties must have at least one zone that permits emergency shelters without discretionary approval, otherwise known as by-right zones. The by-right zone or zones must be identified in the housing element and must be large enough to meet the jurisdiction's need for shelter. By-right projects that meet the community's zoning and development standards are subject to the approval at the staff level rather than a discretionary approval through a public hearing. I seem to recall Alexa mentioning the city had identified only one small by-right zone in the housing element, but I could be wrong on that. Finally taking the homeless issue seriously, and I think beginning to take some action. Better late than never, I guess. But the most successful and least costly projects are those that involve key partnerships with other agencies and organizations. As I mentioned earlier tonight, the city of Placentia is half the size of Westminster, including their budget. But through strong and motivated leadership, the city council, city administrator, and city staff, they have partnered with various agencies and organizations this year to construct and open a veterans' village housing project to house homeless veterans and a full-service navigation center shelter to serve the general homeless population. So yes, perhaps some of these comments are outside of this public hearing item, but quite frankly, it's all relative. Thank you so much.
City Clerk, any other speaker?
At this time, I do not have any additional speakers.
All right, so close public hearing. Council action. So can I have a motion? If not, I move as recommended.
Second, can I just add and just thank staff for their effort to dig everywhere they can to find the funding that we need to address our housing crisis? I, again, appreciate the support and let's keep, let's keep digging. Thanks, Alexa. Thanks, Alexa. Appreciate it.
I'd like to move to make, to approve submitting the grant application.
Yes, that we have. We already have Mayor, Mayor Ta, seconded by Councilmember Contreras to move as recommended.
Okay, okay. It's probably because I got cut out, so I did.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve item four point one.
Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
What's up today? I have to, yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
And that motion carried five to zero.
All right.
All right, so next item, five point one, increase to more, I could find a ghost man for architectural design service related to Mendez to build Monument Park. This is a really good item. Move approval.
Again.
Oh, Councilmember Contreras?
Yes, second.
I second it.
So it, so we have a motion from Mayor Ta, seconded by Councilmember Contreras.
All right.
Yes, and that's to approve an increase to the existing purchase order for MIG in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred forty dollars for design and architectural related to the Mendez Park for fiscal year nineteen twenty. So Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
I think Councilmember Nguyen has a technical difficulty.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So that motion carried five to zero.
All right, item five point two, contract amendment for engineering design services to Mark Thomas for the state grant-funded Mendez. He started Trail Wind Street byway project along Hoover Street.
I move to approve.
I second it.
All right, Vice Mayor Ho move and Councilmember Nguyen, second. So item five point two.
Yes, and that is to approve a contract amendment in the amount of thirty-four thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars for engineering design services to Mark Thomas for the state grant-funded Mendez Park Trail and Green Street Bike Way project along Hoover Street. So Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Yeah, that motion. That motion carried five to zero.
Wow. Okay, six point one, continue from July eighth, twenty twenty, meeting placement of a measure on November third, twenty twenty.
We have either five point three.
Five point three.
I'm sorry, five point three, enhance infrastructure financing district. This is only receiving file. Move as recommended.
Still second.
Wait, wait, what, which, which item is that number?
Five point three.
Five point, five point three.
Alexa, just give us a quick update as to what we're doing.
Alexa, please.
Yes, so we had discussed at the last council meeting whether or not some of the CARES Act funding would be eligible to explore an enhanced infrastructure finance district. And after speaking with county representatives, we've determined that it is not, or at least this round of CARES Act funding is not eligible for that use. But thought it was a good opportunity to provide a little bit of information about what an EIFD does, how it works, the types of money that can be generated, and the amount of taxing agency participation and development or redevelopment that would need to occur in order to accrue a substantial amount of funding. It, it is primarily for infrastructure use and as everyone knows, that's not inexpensive. And not an expensive work. So what you see is that. I'm sorry, go ahead. Councilmember Contreras?
No, I'm sorry, I was coughing.
Okay.
Let me mute first.
So, so what we see is while, while these can be very, very useful tools, definitely anal, some further analysis on kind of the location and the type of development we've been looking at as well as the type of infrastructure that's needed for a particular project requires a reasonable amount of analysis and then also working with other taxing agencies to determine whether or not they would be willing to participate in an EIFD because that's, that's really the goal of the EIFD is for numerous taxing agencies that come together. So this is, this is just information. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, any question from a Member of the City Council, please?
No, thank you, Alexa, for doing the research on that and and clarify about the usage of that money. I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Do we have a motion or a second for this item? I forgot.
Yes, we have a motion from Mayor Ta, seconded by Councilmember Nguyen.
All right.
Okay, and that's to receive and file the report. So Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carried five to zero.
All right, six point one. Any, any question from a Member of the City Council? Six point one about the, about a term limit for elected official. Placement of measure on November third. I mean, I I want to thank City Attorney Office and City Clerk for working on this item. I think that I agree with all the language in the item. If Member of the City Council don't have any question or concerns, I move as recommended.
Good question.
I second it.
All right, I have a motion and second to approve.
It's six point one. Can I do a substitute motion?
Yes, please.
Can we go back to the original two years that what, what? I know Vice Mayor Ho and I, we had a study committee and we studied term limits together. I mean, her and I did a lot of work. We met with, with the Mayor, Mayor Jones, and talked about this and extent we had a lot of time that we spent together discussing term limits. And I'd like to see if we can go back to the original intent of this item, which was a two-four-year. I think it was a, was a twelve-year max. Was, can you repeat the original motion just for the record? I can't remember. I have it off my head. Was that? It's three, four-year terms, correct?
Yes. Yeah, three, four-year terms was the original.
New one makes it twenty-four years. So I, I just want to see if, you know, we substitute motion to go back to the original recommendation that Vice Mayor Ho and I made originally.
You know, you know, I that was the original agreement that the council passed last year for term limit. We have term limits so that we can we will limit the time served as a elected official so that we can allow younger people with the fresh idea come in and be able to move the city forward. We don't want a career politician in the city. So that was a reasonable position. So that was, that's why I, that's why we agreed to to move it forward. So I'm gonna second that motion.
All right, we have a substitute motion and the second up substitute motion on the floor.
Okay, Mayor Ta.
No.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
And Councilmember Nguyen.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No, no.
Okay, substitute motion carries three to zero and that's going to be to adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster.
It was three to two.
Yeah. Yes, three to two. All right, did I say?
Three, zero.
Three to two. That's the adoption resolution. Adopt a resolution entitled resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster ordering the submission of the qualified electors of the city of a certain measure relating to terms of office for the mayor and members of the city council to no more than three, four-year terms at the general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, number three. By resolution number five zero zero three and requesting that the Orange County Board of Supervisors consolidate the election. The doctor resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster setting priorities arguments relating to the service of office for the mayor and members of the city council to no more than three, four-year terms and directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis for the measure and adopt a resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor's council city of Westminster providing for the filing of rebuttal arguments for city measures submitted.
All right, so.
And to just technically that, that was, in fact, that was an amended resolution. Now we've amended the proposed resolution to reflect the prior direction of the council.
I, yeah, I agree with that. Okay, so next we have common and request for agenda items from city council agency member, including A B one, two, three, four report when required. Vice Mayor Ho.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would like to see if I could put on the agenda, I'd like to ask staff to find a grant for homeowners. Due to COVID and due to aging structure, I know that we, we want to focus more on you know, keeping up with, you know, clean and healthy living for our, you know, residents. And I wanted to see, I know years ago, there used to be a grant like CDBG or home fund that we could use to help our homeowners. If, you know, five or ten thousand dollars, if we could look into that, that would be my agenda for next time.
All right, so I honor that request.
I second.
So.
Can you second your?
Vice Mayor Ho, I, I think Vice Mayor Ho make a motion and I second her request.
Yeah, so that was Vice Mayor Ho seconded by Mayor Ta and that's to add an item on the agenda regarding finding grant for homeowners due to COVID aging structures. So Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Yes.
That motion carried five to zero.
All right, anything else from?
Just one more. Yeah, one. Um, you know, I'm, I would like to see if, especially, you know, during this COVID time, I'm, I'm very concerned with cleanliness of particularly of the commercial buildings and shopping strips around the city. So I want to know, I'd like to put on the agenda, see if we can come up with a plan or a, a, a some way we could order these homeowner and commercial building owners to clean up. I don't know where allowed or if there were, there's jurisdiction, we have jurisdiction over, you know, the ownership of those commercial buildings, but I'd like to see if we could attendise to see if there's anything we could do in that regard.
All right, I'm not sure, I'm sure that staff understand that, but I honor that.
So staff. Why are you laughing, Mr. Doe?
All right, so.
We can have code enforcement look into something like this for you.
Thank you, that's what I want. And that's it for me, thank you.
All right, so basically Vice Mayor Ho only need a report, right? Or you want to have an item?
Just a report. We'll, we'll, we'll get a report.
Yeah, there we go, so. Vice Mayor Ho?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. All right, so Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you, sir. I, I was surprised, I didn't have a chance to speak with. I know the city manager and I spoke for a little while about the testing situation. Could you give us an update? I know that item would, I thought I had asked for that item to be on the agenda for this coming agenda. And I, I missed it. We're going to look at getting into a public-private partnership with someone to help provide testing for our community because the lack of support we received from the county.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Contreras. Yes, we did speak on that and I, we did give you an update. And we are through our emergency services manager, I believe he sent you an email, but we can bring that forward if you'd like to, to a meeting or put it in more public forum. But we did look into it, it's very costly. As you know, Irvine is doing that, they're putting out their own money to do a lot of that. The, basically, the county, they are just doing very little at this time, other than doing what the state is opening. They opened up a large facility in Anaheim, the Anaheim Convention Center, and I believe they're going to open another one at the fairgrounds. And that's pretty much the stance that they're taking. We've also thought about going with the partnering with the doctor at the mall, but he is extremely busy and is limited in what he can furnish us. He's basically now doing the one hour. One hour testing and is, is pretty much limited to that, but we can certainly, I can certainly bring this to the next council meeting in a more open forum for you.
Yeah, I just think that, again, us waiting for a Calvary to, to, to save us is just not, it's just not going to happen. I just don't see us finding it, finding that support, but we do have the CARES Act funding and we do, we can get reimbursed through FEMA. So it's not, I don't know that it hurts us using our money because we know we're going to get reimbursed.
Yes, I, I agree. I, I will bring that to you just so that you can see the, the cost of that. It is extremely expensive and yes, we do have CARES Act money, but it would be, we would dig deep into that CARES Act money.
Yeah, I, I would, I would think that's what that money is for unless we're going to be using it for something different. But again, I'd just like to see something come forward for us to choose from, maybe a menu of options. I think that we need, we need to move on, on this testing against been, what now, five months and we're still waiting. And I know the county is opening up those facilities at the Anaheim Convention Center, but those, those appointments fill up like the second they're up and that leaves maybe a thousand, they do, they do a thousand and there's about another, you know, another three million plus residents waiting for, waiting to be tested. So if we could have some options, that would be really helpful, you know, a menu of to choose from, but I really do need to act. So I don't know if that needs to be another item request or that kind of.
Yeah, I like to, I like to respond to Councilmember Contreras request. I think that this is a really good concern. As I understand and aware that I think that in our city, you know, we have the private costly testing. And we all know that, that in Westminster Mall. And I think that because of all the lab right now, they overwhelm. If, I'm not sure that would be the case, but I mean, all the lab that would be overwhelmed. So is that the reason why, you know, like all the city, they have like the issue with testing? I'm not sure that in a room city manager would respond to it or maybe, maybe division chief from OCFA. I know that, you know, so how about, how about division chief? Well, see, wait.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Yes.
So I, I just caught the tail end of the discussion on, so what was the question exactly? I apologize that I had some background noise.
Councilmember Contreras, would you like to repeat your question?
So what we're trying to do is, you know, testing is a big issue. Are you good? Is that important? You want to get that or should I wait?
No, 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 it's just somebody trying to call through, so go ahead.
All right, so my, my, our question is, can we get a menu of options for us to choose from to look at some possibility of us going into a public-private partnership on some COVID testing for our residents?
Well, so we, we researched it quite a bit over the last, last few weeks. And we had, we looked at three different models. We looked at a model that's similar to the city of Irvine, which is, which is a partnership with laboratories and also testing facilities. We looked at all encompassing testing facilities that provide everything, the test and the, and the, and the laboratory work. And then we also looked at possibly contracting with some, with the existing testing facilities. So there's, the challenges are extremely, they're just, they're some very big challenges that are borderline insurmountable. For example, the, when we talk to the healthcare agency, the challenge for the, internally in the county isn't with testing. They have plenty of samples and they're, they're not assisting Irvine in their effort. And there's, there's no effort, there's no motivation for them to assist any, any city in the county to to provide test sites because they have plenty of test samples. They don't have labs to process the samples. So when we look at like, for Irvine as an example, they have a test site, but they're not even processing their, their test samples in the Orange. They're having to ship them overnight to Georgia. And then Georgia takes two or three days to process those test samples and then they're getting them back. Well, if you've been watching the news, you know that they entered that contract with Georgia almost a month ago. And now Georgia's having the same type of spike that California is having. And they're having the same challenges too to get the, the test results in a timely manner to, back to Irvine. And then there's the private agency that we, we've looked into contracting with and they themselves are having trouble. They had three types of tests. They had the serology test, the PCR test and the, and the rapid test. And the only one that they're available to do right now for the exact same reason that, that the availability of labs is the twenty-four hour spit test, saliva test. And that, and that one is not even like, they don't even recognize that, that the CDPH or, or, or Orange County Healthcare Agency to use for data purposes. So it's not, it hasn't proven to be reliable enough for them to use in the, in the base sense. And then all of them require that people go online, make an appointment, provide their, provide all their personal data for. And the reason they do that is for, in case they test positive, they want to have an avenue to do contact tracing. So there's a significant amount of challenges with all three models. Some of them require significant logistical support from the city, which I don't think we have the ability to provide right now. And then the all-encompassing one, which was the last one, I haven't, I haven't spoke to yet, where they do all the, all the components of it is significantly cost prohibitive and our, our research told us that it's, it's right in the neighborhood of about two hundred fifty thousand dollars a month. And the last, last point I want to make is the Irvine model, which is probably the most attractive of the three. They're going through all that effort, they're spending a couple hundred thousand dollars for sixty, for sixty days of testing and they're only able to process about thirty-two hundred tests a month because of, that's exactly what we talked about in the terms of processing the test samples. So they're getting about thirty-two hundred appointments, they're having about a ten percent fallout and they're only providing, you know, one percent for, for that that capital investment, they're, they're not even touching one percent of their population. So the challenges are huge, the costs are expensive and you're really not going to touch a significant portion of your, of your population. And, and then with all that, those challenges, the, the, what really is kind of is out there that's available and it's only available recently is available to test, to have the citizens test for free at the super site at the Anaheim Convention Center. So that one is co-sponsored through the city, the county and the state. And anybody in Orange County can go there and be tested for free. And then in the next few weeks, there's going to be another super site in, at the Orange County Fairgrounds. But with the fact that we can provide them a free service to our citizens at Anaheim or at the Orange County Fairgrounds and not have to lay any capital, I just think it's wiser to, to maybe stand back at this point and let the, that the, our citizens be tested for free at those sites.
But the problem is you can't get an appointment.
So, so that's, that's a, so there, there's a problem to, you can't get an appointment in a timely manner. At the super sites, you can get an appointment, but it might be, it might be a week or two out. I could tell you that as we researched this project for you, we touched bases with the people that are the boots on the ground in Irvine. And they have those thirty-two hundred test appointments. That's all they, they're capable of doing because they have to, it's just, that's all they can get is thirty-two hundred. And for various reasons, but when they went to go online and make the appointments available, all thirty-two hundred, thirty-two hundred of those tests filled up within the first forty-eight hours. So they went live on a Friday. Before Monday came, all the appointments were, were, were already booked. And so there is, you know, and it was, like I said, thirty-two hundred people out of well over a hundred, a population of well over a hundred thousand. And, and so it does, the, the testing is, is, is challenging no matter where you go. And it's, it's just, that's just the nature of the game right now is getting our test processed and getting our results. But if we did it, I don't think that we would be able to, to provide testing at, at any higher rate than anywhere else.
All right, well, well, I mean, I guess in closing, I mean, I would hate, hate to put you on the spot in the pop quiz. I just want to, you know, LA figured it out. LA figured it out long before Orange County did. And Irvine may only have thirty-two hundred, but Westminster has zero tests. Zero tests, zero appointments, zero opportunity for our residents to have access to testing. So I would rather have thirty-two hundred and zero, which is what we have now, zero tests in Westminster. So again, I, I just hope that we continue exploring it and Steve Wells is out there. I'm talking to Long Beach is next door and Long Beach figured it out, they're testing. So again, I'm not putting blame on anyone or, or nor saying that we, that we I, I just think that there's a solution. I don't think we should throw our hands up in the air and say you can't do. I just think that there's got to be a way. LA figured it out or, and Long Beach, which is right next door to us, figured it out. So it must be, it must be something we, we can do. I think we need to look at it as a way of fighting for the lives of our residents and that's just the way I'm looking at it.
Yeah, and, and we looked at, we, we looked at three, like I said, the three different options and we can continue to look at others. But you, you're absolutely right, LA County is, is providing test rates and that's why we looked at LA County City. And I'm not sure of their, of their physical capability, fiscal capabilities over there. But one of the companies they looked at was that all-encompassing company that is, it would, the cost of the city is about five hundred thousand dollars for, for two months. And I just, I don't know that that's the, you know, that, that would be the best path to go for, for a few thousand tests. I mean, because when you just figure out the cost per test, it's, it's not there when we can drive a few miles and get it for free. But there, there might be some other options out there. We continue, I'll continue to look for, for more avenues rather than the three we've already looked at.
I appreciate that. And again, I, I just don't, it breaks my heart when residents call me and say, hey, is it okay if I go to Long Beach and say I'm a Long Beach resident and get a test? You know, is it okay if I go to Dodger Stadium and tell them I'm an LA resident? I mean, for people to want to go that far to get tested, that's a problem. And I think we need to do, it's not our fault. I think a lot of cities like Westminster are left holding the bag because we don't have the support from the county. And it's really unfortunate that we're, we're put in this position. We're, we're not social, we're not a social service agency and, or nor a healthcare agency. And I just feel like we're, it's, it's left us to figure it out. So again, just last in closing, thank you so much for your effort and your time. Sherry, thank you for your effort. I know you're trying, I know you dug around. It's just, you know, I, I, it can't help to, to just, you know, give it, give it a try and, and again, fight for the lives of our residents. In my next, I guess, so my next. In my next, I guess, so my next question would be, if the CARES Act funding won't be used for, for help with testing, have we looked at pursuing another rental assistance program? Or quasi-mortgage assistance program or some sort of effort to help our family stay in their home? I know the $600 unemployment benefit sunsets July 25th. So a lot of families won't be receiving that anymore. And there's going to be a lot of families that are going to be hurting. And I just want to see if there's something for us to reconsider to kind of bring that back and, and explore another rental assistance program to keep our families in our, in their home at least another month. So I like to put that on the agenda to, to move forward with the possible rent assistant program for renters and also help with people that are in homes.
Let me clarify that, with the, the city money or with the ran?
The CARES Act funding, some of the CARES Act funding that we receive.
Okay. Second it, I second it.
Do we have? Still?
Vice Mayor Ho, can you repeat that? I, I cannot hear that.
I just wanted to know if, do we have VAERS money? Are they to look for more CARES money? Or, or are there money, is there money from the CARES Act that they're not using?
All right, stop.
You're asking.
Do you respond to that? Yes.
Yes, I can, I can respond to that. So we do have some money that's from the CARES Act that is set aside for specifically economic help, which would be the money that we received from the supervisor, does supervisor Doe, we can use that money for, and that is set up as an assistant program. We also have money from the state that is coming our way. And they are still telling us how we can use that money. I don't know that we can do it for a rent assistance program. I think they want to use that more for policing. As far as we can use a lot of that for backfilling some of our costs of our, you know, having our police officers out and our emergency help for COVID. There are things we can use COVID for and there are things that we can't. So we are trying to maximize the use of that money. And, but there are some, some rules and guidelines that we're trying to follow. But I know today on the, on the, you know, Alexa presented in 4.1, I believe there's 100,000 there that we can use for rental assistance. I think that was part of her presentation today. So we can, we can do some things with CARES Act money, but I don't know how much we can do with an additional rent at this time, but I can look into it.
Please.
Yeah. So definitely I'm in support if we could do whatever we can to support our residents in this difficult time. So yes, for me. Put it on the calendar, Regina.
So request from Councilmember Contreras, and then that was actually seconded by Councilmember Doe to add an item on the agenda regarding rental assistance for renters and in-home using funding or CARES Act funding or, or other funding as available. So Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes.
Councilmember Doe.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Somebody wake him up.
Councilmember Nguyen.
He's up. Yeah, slow connection. It's like a time delay.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Hi.
Probably he, like, okay, so.
Send him a smoke signal.
Can you text him?
No.
Okay, so he, okay.
Yeah, we'll just say that he was absent. So that motion four to one with him out.
So Vice Mayor Ho, are you done? Oh, Councilmember Contreras, anything else?
No, Mayor, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, good. Councilmember Doe.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Now we, you know, I'm, I'm really concerned about the state of the city, especially for businesses. It looks like this is going to be a new normal. Our businesses have to move outdoors. And recently, a couple of days ago, the governors allowed the hand now for businesses to operate outdoors. And I checked with staff, city staff, like was informed. Because we, we talk about restaurants that that offer outdoor dining, they would quite tell permit. And with this city, I don't know how many, how many restaurants we have in the city, but it's only so far, it's five permit been granted to operate outdoor. And, you know, I, I look at the application and I think it's a little bit, process is very lengthy. First of all, they have to get approval from landlord. And the landlord have to, they require, because of liability, they require to have businesses to have to contact insurance and expand the coverage from outside, from inside to outside. Okay, which is understandable. And then the, 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 the city have their own requirement. So on top of that, you know, the business have to pay for a fee to process the application. So far, all the businesses that I, I know, they submit the application and get, they follow the, all the procedure and it got approved pretty quickly. So far, there's like 20, approximately about 20 businesses has been calling the city, asking questions regarding outdoor, operating outdoor. So I'd like to have the city's staff to proactively go out there and help businesses to help them to get the permit to offer the outdoor services. It, it, it seems like it's going to be a, a, a new normal for for us across the planet. I mean, you know, with all the contagious diseases, we don't know when we're going to shut down again, take everything outdoors. So as an emergency operating procedure, you know, we, we need to be proactively support our businesses to help them facilitate the process of, 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 right now, if it's from a restaurant to customer, cosmetologies, to services, and have them, help them to move everything outdoors. So that way we can, because you know, business stuff, not bringing money, the city, you're not going to get any money from taxes. So it, it's just, it's just a matter of time. We need to go out there. Most of businesses are mom and pops. But they're not very good with, with applying for application and permit and reading all the requirement. So and I have reached out to city staff, Sherry and Alexis, and I, I would like you to recap of what we talked about and what can we do to help the, the city moving forward in this.
All right. Any staff, I would like to respond to, to Councilmember Doe concerns.
Yes, I can respond. So we have actually updated our temporary outdoor dining permit that went live on our website that maybe two or three hours ago, very late this afternoon. So we've streamlined the permit process a bit. We've made it easier to understand. We've reduced, you know, some of the number of questions. And we've tried to make it very clear that, you know, there are different levels of things that you can do outside. And some things can be done very simply and processed right at the counter. Other things that are more extensive may require additional review all the way up through OC Fire. So for simple arrangements outside, it can be done quickly and, you know, kind of on up. So the, the new application does do a better job of explaining how that works so that the applicant has a better idea of, you know, kind of what, what they're looking for. And then we have also provided a form that the applicants can fill out. So speaking of use of our CARES money, so the applicant can fill out basically certifying that they need to do this as a result of the pandemic. And then the city can utilize its CARES Act funding to pay for the cost of the permit issuance, the, the permit fee. So, so we have just updated that literally just hours ago. So that's brand new. And then with regard to other businesses, I did, at 5 o'clock tonight, had about a half hour conversation with our city attorney's office regarding what types of assistance we could provide to businesses. There's some definitely concerns about liability of basically city or a city agent filling out a form for somebody else. So yeah, we're, we're still talking that through, but I was advised by our attorney that it's not something that we want to jump into blindly.
So, so just, just to, so my, I, I, I did talk to you and Sherry were talking about if our city will proactively go out there and contacting businesses and then offering our advice or guidance as to how to shut up the outdoor services outside the business. So that, that we, that will provide a safe environment for the, for the public, public safety. And, and after talking to the city attorney, there was some concern about possible liability and risk management. While if we, if we actively go out there and kind of like advise people how to do it. Is there anything else that we can do that, that number one, to protect the city, but number, and number two, is, is, is really help people, motivate them, give them some ideas to safely operate? Because right now, we, we need all the businesses to operate so that they can generate income. I mean, a lot of people wonder, you know, like the restaurant, I, I mean, I want to go out and sit down and eat in many places that I can, you know? And I'm sure that a lot, if we can have our businesses, especially all the restaurants that can offer outdoor dining legally with permit, then it will help to generate revenue for the city.
So what we can do and what, what we have started doing, so we, we ordered some poster printings and, you know, the social distancing and so forth. So we do have CPU staff that's out in the field handing posters out to businesses, you know, just for their convenience, so they can utilize it. And we can also have them, you know, sort of let them know that we do have this outdoor permit process. We've talked about them actually just having applications in the vehicle with them. So at least we can spread the information that this is available. But yeah, there's, there, there is some concern about us essentially acting as an agent for them to fill out their form.
Okay, do, do we have enough staff? I understand the planning department have a very short-handed.
Yes.
Well, we're kind of overwhelmed. Is there any way we can facilitate that department to help the, the, the resident and the businesses obtain a permit in term of outdoor services?
I mean, we, we can certainly, you know, work with a, with a contractor to provide information or more widely spread information. But as long as we're paying that person one way or another, it's, it's still, it would still be the city taking on some additional risk and liability.
Okay, so, so right now at this point, the city will issue, reimburse the permit fee through the CARES Act, is that correct?
Yes, we will. And we'll be contacting the businesses that already applied for and paid the fee to let them know they can fill out this form and be reimbursed as well.
Okay. Can, can we do a mailing to those who are business? With brochures? Or in the utility of billing or anything that we can reach out to the businesses and ask and offer and advise that the possibility of providing outdoor services for their business?
Certainly. I mean, if you'd like to direct staff to do a billing, I'm, I'm sorry, a mailing, I'm certain that we can utilize the CARES funding for that.
Okay. Do we need a council action for that? So yes, so you're not.
You, you need council action. Cause just, you're going to spend money. So you need to have the council approve spending of that money.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd put that on the agenda for next week.
Second.
All right. So that was a request by Councilmember, and seconded by Mayor Ta regarding spending on a mailing for businesses.
Yes. Is there anywhere that I can verify that from Councilmember Doe? So for the next meeting, you know, I, yeah, I, I agree that we want to see that item. But is there anywhere that staff going to give us that how much money that we go to spend for mail-in? All right?
That would be in the risk report, obviously.
Okay.
Okay. Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah.
Member Doe.
Yes.
That's one win.
Yes.
And motion carried five to zero.
Councilmember Doe, is anything else?
Um, no, not at this point right now. I'd like to thank city staff and for your hard work. Thank you, Sherry, Alexa for. And I wish everyone and the resident of the city be safe, be healthy. Take it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nguyen.
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for their hard work during this difficult times. Much appreciated for their efforts. And everyone just stay, stay, stay healthy. That's all I have to say for today.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I, I have a question for staff, either like inner room city manager or Alexa, can we use a CARES Act funding for buying masks for our seniors? Because I think that, you know, I, you know, we all read that there are more cases every day. So I mean, like if, if the CARES Act, you know, funding, we could able to use that to buy more masks, to provide that free to our senior or to anyone who need it.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor, yes, I believe we can do that with the CARES Act money. We could organize, organize that through Diana's shop.
Okay. So we don't need an, an item for the next meeting, right? For that, we could able to use CARES.
I don't believe you do, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the manager has the authority to do that. Manager so directs.
All right. Have a question to see attorney before we convene this meeting.
City Attorney.
Um, Dick, Dick, would you be so kind? I, I have, I didn't hear what you say about the closed session meeting. Would you, would you be so kind, repeat that so we can have the, everything, everybody go on the same boat when we, when people ask us?
Sure. What I said on, when I came out was the council had a closed session discussion starting at 6 o'clock. It did not conclude that discussion. So following the regular business meeting that, that we started at 7 o'clock, we'll be going back into closed session to further continue that discussion.
Thank you.
So if the council don't have anything to say, you know, now we need to go back to the closed section. And after that, do we need to come out and report, City Attorney?
It depends on what, if you take any action in closed session. I don't know.
All right.
So, so at this time, 8:35 PM, what I'm going to do is everyone that does not belong in the session, you can leave, or I will, I can put you in holding. What will happen is the live feed will pause for the purposes of closed session. And then if anything needs to be reported out, then we'll resume the recording and broadcast it live again so that, you know, any action taken in closed session can be reported.
Correct.
So just give me, just give me a few minutes to set everything up.